I'd like to call the order of the meeting, the President and the Board of Trustees for the June 15th meeting. Roll call, please.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rassage.
Here.
Trustee. I'm sorry.
Want me to read the name?
No, I was chewing gum and it got stuck in my throat.
That's a detention.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trust your work. Mayor Collins.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking board consideration of a motion to appoint Trustee Lamb as chairman for this evening's meeting.
I make a motion to appoint Trustee Lamb as chairman for this evening's meeting.
Second. That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. Presidential comments?
One comment. We have a presentation of a landmark plaque on Wednesday at 4:30. This is an 1832 building, one of the earliest ones, that was originally owned by Chester Ingersoll, who helped found Plainfield. It's been refurbished, the house has been refurbished in a historical manner. Deb Olson, who's a member of the Historic Preservation Committee, did the work, and Kiwi Bright and her husband John are the ones who moved into it this last week. So they did a great job of restoring it, and anybody would like to come and see the award presentation. It will actually occur at the House, which is at 24010 Commercial Street.
Trustees' comments?
I have just one comment. Today's a very special day, not only are the Chicago Blackhawks playing, probably the game already started so we get this meeting going, but today's a very special day because I know Trustee Lamb possibly could have been there. Eight hundred years ago today, the Magna Carta was signed. Isn't that something? 12:15 this afternoon, eight hundred years ago, the Magna Carta was signed. If you don't know what the Magna Carta was, Magna Carta is the basis for English and American constitutional law. It basically ascribed to the simple fact that a person's home is their castle. In addition to that, it gave basic rights to individuals in England at that time. Unfortunately, King John ignored all of the rights that were granted, and a revolt was ensued. But yet, it's just a wonderful thing that occurred, and another thing I would like to very basically mention. Last Thursday, on June the 11th, I attended a meeting at the Plainfield Township Community Center to discuss the Plainfield Library expansion, or expansion of the existing facility, or the construction of a new building. For those who are interested, this, on June the 17th, which is Wednesday, June the 17th, at 6:30, during the monthly Plainfield Library Board meeting, they will do another discussion of what is proposed for the Plainfield Library. The library has outgrown itself totally. It is, the last expansion they had was like 25 years ago. Population has more than quadrupled, but yet the funding has remained the same. They're going to be discussing a possible new addition to the existing facility, or a new construction of a new library at the existing facility. So if you want some input, if you want to see what is being proposed, if you want to try and help the library board in any fashion, that's the time to go. And it will be a very interesting meeting. It takes about an hour, and you get a complete overview of what the library is planning on doing. I would encourage everyone to attend. Thank you.
Yes, Trustee Rassage brings up some good points, including revolts. I think my personal favorite is Bastille Day, celebrated in France. One other point of news in world history actually is taking place is that Belgium has actually pushed, and I believe gotten approved, a two and a half euro that's actually going to have Waterloo on it, so France is disliking. And go Hawks, and those are my comments for tonight.
Are there any other trustee comments? Not. This will be the time for public comments, not to exceed three to five minutes. If there are no public comments, then we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. We're seeking a motion to remove item E from the consent agenda.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to remove item E from the consent agenda and vote on it later. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Here.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on June 1st, bills paid and bills payable reports for June 15th, catch and investment revenue and expenditure reports for May, resolution number 1712, adopting the 2015 prevailing wage rates for Will and Kendall Counties.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt items A through D under the consent agenda. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. We're seeking a motion to renew the copier agreement with McGrath Office Equipment in the amount of $2,715 per month for a term of 48 months. Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Comments. If I do the math right, we're renewing $130,320 contract, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Administrator Murphy?
I'm going to lean to Mrs. Plekem to answer that question.
For the 48-month term, are you?
And I don't see any, maybe I missed it or wasn't in my, I don't see any competitive bids, and I realize it's a service, and we're not bound to get competitive bids on services, right?
Right. This particular vendor uses purchasing through the U.S. Community Government Purchasing Alliance pricing, which is like state bid pricing, so they've gone through their due diligence on the pricing of the machines, and that's why there weren't competitive bids.
Okay.
We've had McGrath for a number of years, dating back to, wow, a long time. We've been very happy with their service, and the big thing is they do come out and service the machines same day, and they will replace machines if we're not satisfied, which is key for us here.
That's important, I agree with you. I guess the position here that I'm taking is the GSA, the General Service, it's a federal contract, General Service, and it's typically comparable to retail prices, not necessarily state contract prices, in my experience. So I'm concerned that we're doling out $130,000, no big contract, to a vendor, and I'd like to see us at least get counter proposals, possibly, I think Velocita and Joliet, I think Gordon Fleisch, maybe there's some other copier services, maybe Trustee Benucci can enlighten us on some of the school district use that provide good services before we move forward and just hand out $130,000 to this company without getting competitive quotes. That's where I'm at with it, so, I mean, it would have hurt us to hold this off for a couple of weeks and get those quotes, and then decide.
Doesn't hurt us necessarily, but I do want it to be clear, just so we, I appreciate you saying this wasn't competitively bid, however, it is a competitively bid process by going through the U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance. So it has been competitively bid out. I don't want you to think that we didn't work with this particular group. That is a process that does vet for us.
Right, and I agree with you. And on the surface, it definitely looks like it's a competitively bid contract, but I would argue that the GSA contract is typically very close to retail pricing, with typically free shipping, if actually obtaining hardware, where this is a service. So I would have to argue the validity of how much of a discount the GSA contract actually is, and what a discount they're offering.
It's not a GSA contract.
Okay.
It's a separate.
A separate.
It's not a GSA contract.
I guess, okay, then I'll concur with that. Would it hurt the weight?
No, I just want to make sure that I'm, to make sure that we're being clear. I just want to be clear that it isn't a GSA contract.
Agreed.
And it has been competitively bid.
Okay.
But if it's the board's interest that we go and solicit other proposals, we can certainly go down that.
We're necessarily bound to take the least expensive one. If, for example, the most competitive ones are a dollar or two less, maybe we'll stick with the one that we're used to, but if there's someone that's 20 or 30 percent less, and we're going to save, you know, $10,000, maybe we should look at it.
School district, for whatever it's worth, uses Gordon Fleisch, but that's a, that was a whole different dynamic in how they, that was handled by the Finance Department, how they did that, but that's just another vendor.
Are there any?
A particular question regarding the copier agreement, it's a renewal. Did we receive, Administrator Murphy, did we receive good service from the McGrath Corporation?
We've been very pleased with the contract that we've had with them in the past. Their level of service has been absolutely fantastic. The improvements on this contract actually make it a lot easier for our staff to manage those costs. All of the toner and other maintenance costs are already wrapped up and included in this. We do have a couple of copiers that run over what our stated allowances are, and with this new contract, it actually allows for us to manage those costs a lot better.
And you did say it is a competitively bid situation, so this can support itself if anyone was to question it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? If not, there is a motion on the floor to renew the copier agreement with McGrath Office Equipment in the amount of $2,715 per month for a term of 48 months. Trustee Peck.
No.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Lot 2 Meyer. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to remove this item from the table.
I make a motion to remove this particular item from the table.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to remove the item from the table. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the site plan review for 15,614 square foot retail building to be located at the southeastern corner of Route 59 and 135th Street, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
They did change the design. Could you quickly describe, Jonathan, what they did?
That's correct, thank you. So subsequent to the previous meeting, staff in the applicant work together to come up with a, kind of an alternative design that incorporates both the garden wall, the knee wall that was presented at the previous meeting, as well as a change to the footprint and the elevation of the retail building that incorporates a curved component that will kind of hold the corner there. You can see a little bit in the footprint here, as well as on the elevation. A little harder to read on the actual elevation, but if you look where it says shopper, to the right of that, that parapet section actually includes a curvilinear, a curved component. That's a little bit more distinctive, and we feel appropriate for the prominent corner location here. So the developer is in agreement with this. Staff is comfortable that it addresses the prior, the board's prior direction, and the end result is both a change to elevations, as well as the garden wall component that was discussed previously.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not. The motion was made and seconded to approve the site plan review for a 15,614 square foot retail building on Lot 2 of Meyer Pet Plus. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Frederick Property, 13318 South Rivercrest Drive. We're seeking a motion to open a public hearing regarding an annexation agreement and annexation of property commonly known as 13318 South Rivercrest Drive.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
So the request here is annexation of a single-family home lot on Naperville Plainfield Road, or, excuse me, South Rivercrest Drive. The request is to annex into the village to construct a single-family home, and the impetus for annexation is primarily just access to village utilities, which is something that we've seen in the past, and staff would anticipate will continue to see into the future. There's nothing over and above requested via the annexation agreement. This is a fairly straightforward annexation agreement, provides for the zoning, access to the utilities, the development, or the single home would pay the applicable school and park fees, water connection fees, and so forth. So a very straightforward request.
This is a public hearing. Are there any public comments on this item? There are no public comments, and we're seeking a motion to close the public hearing and return to the regular business meeting. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you that motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the village attorney to draft the necessary ordinances approving the annexation agreement and annexation for the property commonly known as 13318 South Rivercrest Drive.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing non, proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2015 United Methodist Church Carillon Concert. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the United Methodist Church's request for two carillon concerts to be hosted on July 1st and August 5th at Chicago Street adjacent to the church, and to authorize the necessary road closures as identified.
I make a motion to approve the United Methodist Church's request for two carillon concerts.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing non, proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2015 Patriotic Picnic and Fireworks. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the 2015 Patriotic Picnic and Firework Show to be held on July 3rd, to be held at Plainfield Central High School, and to authorize the necessary road closures as identified.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing non, proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Dunkin' Donuts Baskin-Robbins reimagining. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the site plan review for the reimagining of the Dunkin' Donuts Baskin-Robbins at 13318 South Route 59, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report.
I make a motion to approve the site plan review for the reimagining of the Dunkin' Donuts Baskin-Robbins at 13313 South Route 59, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
One question quickly, Jonathan. Number three, they have agreed to go back to the original plan, as stipulated.
That's correct. There are just some minor discrepancies. It has to do with the paint color on some safety bollards, as well as the trash enclosure gate, which is painted a kind of a corporate branded color, and the original site plan approval was for safety yellow for the bollards, and just a natural wood color for the gate. So the applicant has agreed.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not. The motion was made and seconded to approve the site plan review for the reimagining of Dunkin' Donuts/Baskin-Robbins at 13313 South Route 59, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Will County Case 23132 West Main Street. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to direct staff to submit a letter of objection to the Will County Land Use Department in opposition of the proposed development.
I make a motion to, to direct the staff to submit a letter of objection to the Will County Land Use Department in opposition of the proposed development.
Not a point of clarification. You did something similar with a proposal recently, and that particular motion directed the village president, or this time we're directing staff to send the letter. Is there any particular or granular reason why we're having staff versus the village president do this?
The village president is out of town, and so we wanted to get the letter out tomorrow. So.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Just following up on the earlier letter that we wrote, has that been acted on by Will County yet?
I'm not aware of the current status. I know that they requested some additional information from staff, and we're preparing a staff report, so I think it's.
Everybody.
Being considered concurrently.
Wrote letters, opposed it. However, I listened to one of the Will County board members saying, oh, well, yeah, maybe not such a bad idea after all. That's why I'm really curious to how that one turns out. I hope these letters are effective, because that one uniformly was panned by everybody. This one probably will be too, although not as many people are involved here as there are in the other one. Thank you, though.
I believe that's on the Thursday County Board agenda, this Thursday at 9:30.
Like to see some feedback for the next meeting, then, on that, because it's.
In the packet, it says the comprehensive has the location set as Greenway, correct? But yet, it says the staff believes the location has the potential for retail use.
That's correct.
Correct, so I think it's, for a business owner, if somebody wanting to develop the site and take down the house that's already out there, it's kind of confusing for them. They're thinking they can, you want to preserve it for Greenway, yet they want to open a business there, and you're saying, no, because we see businesses opening there.
I think the plant commission's discussion of the case, there were a few different reasons cited for their support of a letter of objection, but I think the general consensus was that they, the feeling was that this wasn't perhaps the highest and best use that we would like to see as the village of Plainfield for this location. I think it would be a little bit indirect to cite the land use designation, the comprehensive plan is a reason for objection, because ultimately, at least as a, you know, member of the planning staff, I think it would make a great location for some sort of commercial or retail in the future. And our comprehensive plan, land use designations are very broad. They aren't necessarily parcel specific in the case of zoning, so when you get down to the parcel-by-parcel level, I think it's appropriate to look. Majority of the lot is most likely encumbered by wetlands or flood plain.
John, they can't.
Pardon me, speak up a little bit here. So I think the majority of the lot is encumbered by flood plain. You know, a very small portion is buildable, so that's probably why it was painted broadly as Greenway, but when you look at a very parcel-specific.
So if it's, if it's a very small portion is buildable, it kind of limits the use of what can actually go there.
Correct. You know, in advance of any type of engineering, doing, no, bringing in fill, doing compensatory storage, and kind of reengineering the site to tailor it more, make it a little bit better suited. But I think at the end of the day, the feeling was this defense manufacturing and storage right on Route 126 was not the plant commission's vision, at least.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not. The motion was made and seconded to direct staff to send a letter of objection to the Will County Land Use Department in opposition of the proposed development, 23132 West Main Street. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage. Trustee Wojkowski.
No.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. Administrator's report?
None tonight.
Management Services report?
No report.
Engineers report?
No report.
Planning Department report?
Thank you. We have just two quick things this evening. The first is a request for a final plat reapproval. As the board most likely recalls, final plats, our subdivision code calls for the final plats to be recorded with the Will or Kendall County Recorder's Office within 180 days of the village board's approval. In the case here, this final plat failed to record, and the petitioner is now looking to record that plat. Just to refresh memory, this is for a 16-lot residential subdivision east of Heggs Road, north of 135th Street, and staff is comfortable that all the requirements are in place and has no reservation with the, seeking reapproval.
Motion? Or motion?
I move we reapprove the final plat of the subdivision that preserved of Plainfield, which was originally approved in October 20th, 2014, but it's not recorded at that time.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Not, then I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries.
Thank you. And then the second item is a request for a farmer's, a farm stand, sales in the parking lot of the Menards Shopping Center. It is from a local Plainfield area farmer. The sale dates would be generally July through October, Friday through Sunday, maybe Thursday through Sunday, Thursday through Saturday, daytime hours, 11 to 6:00 p.m., give or take. So staff is generally comfortable that it wouldn't occupy any required parking, wouldn't have a negative impact to the onsite traffic circulation, that sort of thing. There's no power, you know, electricity being proposed. This is generally consistent with what's been conducted in other locations within the village for a number of years, and we haven't experienced any problems, so staff's generally comfortable with the request.
We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve a farm stand as a temporary use in the Menards Shopping Center parking lot, pursuant to the enclosed request.
I make a motion to approve a farm stand as a temporary use in the Menards Shopping Center parking lot pursuant to the enclosed request.
Second.
Offens or whatnot. Did the Health Department send us a lot of objections, saying that they don't want to deal with this, like it did the other proposal?
No, we've received no correspondence.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I have a comment. You know what, Plainfield, the history of Plainfield is founded on the total concept of a farm community. I know it has, it has moved into the 21st century, but yet, this is really a neat initiative. It's something that Plainfield, like I say, was based on, and I know we've moved a lot further ahead, but yet, I still support this private initiative on an individual, and I think people also do. And so I would definitely vote for it when I have an opportunity.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I'll second those statements.
Motion was made and seconded to approve a farm stand as temporary use in the Menards Shopping Center. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. Building Department report?
I'm coming.
He's happy to answer any questions you might very well have.
Wait. Shouldn't we welcome Mr. Goska? He's the interim individual in the interim building department. Welcome to your first board meeting.
Thank you.
I know we must have a lot of questions for you.
Save them.
We'll save them for later, maybe. Okay. But again, Ken, welcome to our sessions.
I think he may have more questions of us than we have of him.
Well, there you go.
Public Works report?
Okay, several items on the agenda, and let me just give a quick overview. We will talk about the intergovernmental agreement at a future meeting as part of the budget process. process, how it's a benefit to both the township and the village, and no added cost to the taxpayer. It should increase and improve service, and especially in winter operations too as well. We'll also talk about the Emerald Ash Board and how this works, and we've utilized contractors in the past for this too as well. The other items are just housekeeping items, and I would be happy to answer any questions and, or entertain a motion to combine the items and vote on them at once.
We're seeking a motion to vote for the five Public Works items as omnibus vote.
Vote on all of those items at once?
Second. The motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Are there any comments or questions on any of the items underneath the Public Works report? Matt, then we'd be seeking a motion to approve an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Plainfield Township Road District, an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Wheatland Township Road District, authorize ArborTech Services, the contractor providing the lowest proposal to remove the infested Parkway ash trees and stumps that cost not to exceed $100,000, to authorize the purchase of one water meter, 5502 radio read handheld device with accessories from HD Supply Waterworks at a total amount of $6,200, and to authorize the continuation of an alum purchase contract with Harkros Chemical at the same unit price of .102 pound for the next 12 months as permitted under the existing contract. I move? The motion's been made and seconded to approve the five items under the Public Works report as just read. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Now, just, I know we wanted to get that taken care of, but I do want to make a quick mention, if it's okay, because Alan made a report earlier to, at coffee with the mayor. We expect to actually take down 1,800 ash trees this year. That's 1,800 ash trees. That's twice the number of production we've had in the previous three years. It will take out more than half of the remaining trees that we have. Those 1,800 trees have already been identified, they, by how far along they are in, in their failure. They are over 50% failed. Those are the trees that we've identified and are taking out. Some of them are just way too beyond our capabilities, which is why you approved the contract that you had. However, our crews were already out today in the rain, cutting down. You'll notice when you leave Village Hall, this meeting, that there's a large removal in that particular, here in Settlers Park, and we'll be continuing that through over the next, they're hoping two months to be able to get all of those trees removed. Rather aggressive schedule, but they're up to the challenge.
Mr. Murphy, are the residents being made aware of when their tree is going to be taken down, and then when they get the new trees, when they're going to be put back up?
We do get a lot of calls as to when they're getting new trees. I can tell you, our first priority right now is to remove these dead trees or the dying trees, because they become so brittle that we want to get them down before they become a hazard. We are on a very large delay in planting. That being said, Mr. Persons can probably give a little bit more update as to the noticing that goes out for the removals.
Yeah, as far as a notice, we did provide flyers at each one of the homes in the past, but since we have 12,000 homes out there, the message to the residents, because the majority of the calls we get these days are, when is my Parkway tree going to be cut down? And we are starting on the north half of the community, and we were working our way south. So from this week on, over the next month, and over the next month, six weeks or so, we hope to be to Lockport Street and headed our way south too as well. So generally, people on the north section of the community, where we have the heavier problems, will be taken care of first, and we will work our way south, and all 1,800 trees will be removed before the end of October. Replacements will occur in November. We're planning on 500 to 600 new trees being installed, and then a spring planting program next year, and a fall planting program next year too as well, depending on the price and availability of trees. But we'd be happy to give the board an update as this progresses.
I just think it's important the residents know what's going on, especially it's in their front yard.
We agree.
Police Chiefs report?
Good evening. Tonight, we have three things for you. The first one is an amended ordinance relating to the administrative adjudication process at the Police Department. Police Department's legal counsel, Joan Myers, is here also, and if there are any questions, the two of us will try to address them for you.
One of the words in the report is that it's necessary to increase the amount from 250 to 500. What was the necessity? I assume 250 does not have the right impact. Is that... Thank you.
Point of clarification. I have full confidence in our staff that will utilize that, that increase if and only when necessary, and that obviously, we're proposing it for a reason. So I'll support it. Perfect. Thank you.
We're seeking a motion to adopt ordinance number 3217, amending Chapter 2, Article 8, relating to administrative adjudication. Yes.
I move we approve ordinance 3217.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Not then I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
The next item we have is a request to purchase. If it pleases the board, the last board meeting, you approved the purchase of two new Ford Interceptor sedan squad cars for the Police Department. Unfortunately, when that request came before you, we did not yet have the estimates for the emergency equipment. So this request is actually for the emergency equipment for those two sedans that were already approved. The quotes came in from three separate companies, two of which we have business proceedings with previously. That would be Ray O'Hara and Fleet Safety Supply. Fleet Safety Supply did provide the lowest quote at $13,453.02, or $6,726 and change per squad. This was a budgeted item and was approved in this year's current fiscal budget. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
I move we authorize the purchase of the necessary lighting and equipment for two Ford Interceptor sedans from Fleet Safety Supply for the amount of $13,453.02.
Second.
I'm glad we got quotes. Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Not then I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
And then lastly, tonight, we have the operations report for May 2015. If there are any questions on that, I will try to answer them for you.
You know. I just have one question, Commander Ruggles. Perhaps I should have brought this specific up when we approved the United Methodist Church Carillon Concert. In your particular staff report, you had said there were some negative obstacles potential in the future concert. There's a possibility of something negative occurring in the form of a protest that was delivered last year. What I'm going to ask you is, are we, I know we have to protect the rights, the freedom of speech of individuals, assuming someone was to choose to come and protest. But we also have to protect the rights of individuals who are attempting a public concert and at a religious institution. What I'm asking, will the police have a presence at these two concerts? Has it been thought of?
Yes, it has been. Our intention right now would be to put our bike unit at this particular event on both occasions. That would be headed up by Sergeant Mullisack this summer. He's working for me on all the special events. He's been at cruise nights, as you may or may not have been aware. The individual that attended last year at the Carillon Concert and started that issue has actually appeared last week at cruise nights. He has had some conversation with us that he does intend to increase the size of his presence with his organization at these events this summer. And so we have had several discussions about how we intend to approach that, how we intend to deal with it while protecting his freedom of speech, also attempting to protect all the other attendees and their right to have their event. So there is some discussion. We are looking at our possibilities of how we can address those things to preserve both parties' rights in the matter.
Thank you. As always, I know you, the Police Department, you in particular, always are one step ahead of particular questions, but I felt it was very important to discuss that in public. Thank you.
Attorney's report?
Thank you. As the board's aware, at least twice a year, the board is required to review the closed session minutes and determine if any or all of those should remain confidential. And I've had a chance to review those closed session minutes, and my recommendation as to a motion would be that the minutes of January 5th, 2015, July 7th, 2014, July 21st, 2014, November 17th, 2014, and November 3rd, 2014, be released as there's no longer need for confidentiality, and that the remaining minutes remain confidential.
We'd be seeking a motion to release the executive session minutes as identified by Attorney Harvey, and to keep the remaining minutes confidential.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Reminders?
The Plan Commission meeting for June 16th has been canceled. As I mentioned in the introductory comments, the HBC has a special meeting at 24010 Commercial Street to present a landmark for the Chester Ingersoll House, a good friend of Trustee Ratchik from the early days. The concert. The concert on June 18th will be in Settlers Park. June 22nd, Committee of the Whole. June 26th, there'll be movie in Settlers Park, Night in the Museum, Secret of the Tomb. And the next board meeting, Village Board meeting will be July 6th.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.